All being ordered.
Let's do it, please.
So long on fixed assets today. Now we're kind of all day tomorrow trying to.
You did her.
Okay, we'll do the roll call, please.
President Dom.
Here.
Vice President Everard.
Here.
Treasurer Gaten.
Here.
Secretary Frizz.
Here.
Trustee Thomas.
Here.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Present.
And Trustee Wazor.
Here. Ron, you want to read the conservation ethic?
To foster our conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens, helping all of us regardless of the basis of our interest in nature, develop a greater awareness of our role and responsibility for the total community of life. The conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then act on that information. A conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of our county's open spaces. For to interpret and to promote the overall significance of natural and cultural resources and to revolve public understanding and support of district land management practices.
Thank you. Ray, would you read the stewardship pledge?
We pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, and way of life in McHenry County. Our quality of life in McHenry County depends on healthy and sustainable natural resources, thoughtfully developed cities and towns, a strong economy, and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. Number 11, we will manage public lands through science and in a manner that is responsive and resilient to a changing climate.
Thank you. All right. Can entertain a motion or do a job, adopt, and adjourn? So move. Second, the move and seconded, roll call, please.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Treasurer Gaten.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Secretary Frizz.
Yes.
Trustee Wazor.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
President Dom.
Yes. Hey, the agenda is good. Next, seven point oh, I'd like to recognize the retirement of Wendy. There, there she is. She was going to. Yeah, you might as well hear you come out. Lloyd's going to. Read all the whereas.
Are you done with a photo of me?
Well, who's going to take the picture?
It's gonna take a while.
Yeah.
Whereas, McHenry County Conservation District has protected over twenty-five thousand eight hundred acres of open space, thirty-five conservation areas, forty-five miles of regional trails that provide access to more than one hundred and fifteen miles of an integrated trail network. Act to restore its lands to their ecological health, offers educational programs that encourage appreciation of the natural environment and a fundamental understanding of the environmental ethic, and develops its lands for the safe, quiet enjoyment and interest of McHenry County residents. And whereas the district is supported in its efforts by many dedicated staff and volunteers engaged in a variety of activities, including protection of natural resources and the flora and fauna and people who share them, site and facility maintenance, improvement, natural area restoration, trail clearing and monitoring, wildlife monitoring, care, environmental, historical, and cultural interpretation, educational outreach programs, and many other endeavors. And whereas Wendy began her career at the district in two thousand and six as communications manager, bringing with her more than twelve years of previous professional experience as well as a bachelor's degree from Bradley University, with a double major in marketing and advertising and a master's in marketing communications from Roosevelt University. And whereas Wendy was promoted to Director of Marketing and Communications in two thousand eighteen and Director of Marketing and Education in two thousand nineteen, it oversaw the merger of the marketing and education departments into one division, leading the two teams to new levels of synergy and collaboration to better engage and educate residents about the district's mission and navigated most notably during the global health pandemic, increasing outdoor access to all. Whereas, over the past eighteen years, Wendy has developed and implemented multiple communications and marketing plans, assisted with various outreach initiatives, organized site openings, ribbon cuttings, coordinated community-wide additive and interest surveys, and provided content and served as a copy editor for various plans and publications such as The Oaks of McHenry County, the district's strategic plan, and the fiftieth anniversary commemorative book. And whereas Wendy served on both the leadership and executive leadership teams and helped guide the direction of the district. And whereas Wendy was a constant leader and mentor to team members within her division and across the district, lending expertise and knowledge to innumerable working groups and committees. And whereas Wendy oversaw the rebranding of the district and adoption of a new logo in two thousand and nine, along with the development of branding standards and guidelines, resulting in the growth and visibility of branding awareness. And whereas Wendy was the editor and writer for the district's quarterly print publication, Landscapes Magazine, transforming it to a forty-page colored publication in two thousand eleven and growing its distribution to over twenty thousand households. And whereas Wendy led her team in the production of the district's two thousand seventeen calendar, which was named first place print communication at the Illinois Park Recreation Associations Soaring to New Heights Conference agency showcase, as well as the creation and implementation of the Find Your Wild Summer Challenge, which was named outstanding program or special event at the Illinois Park Recreation Association's Soaring to New Heights Conference in two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas Wendy worked in collaboration with the McHenry County Conservation Foundation to create and execute the first fundraiser, Path Into Your Wildside, netting thirty-five thousand dollars in its first year and securing multiple special event sponsors. And whereas Wendy played a major role in the coordination, marketing, execution, and growth of the district's special events, including the now-retired Trail History, Conservation Congress, multiple district anniversary celebrations, conservation area grand openings, and the Great Outdoors Beer Trail. And whereas Wendy acted as liaison for news media, wrote and distributed countless press releases, coordinated district messaging and responses during critical moments of crisis management. And whereas Wendy first launched the district's social media accounts and e-newsletter and oversaw their growth, reaching new audiences for the district. And whereas Wendy produced hundreds of thousands of print and digital media pieces, including annual reports, brochures, videos, web copy, book copy, and more. Whereas Wendy has decided to retire from her position effective June four, two thousand and twenty-four, let it be resolved that the officers and board of trustees of the McHenry County Conservation District hereby express and convey their deep and sincere gratitude and heartfelt appreciation to Wendy for her continued dedication to the mission of the district and that this resolution be incorporated into the official records of the district. The witness whereof we have here on two, subscribed our names and affixed the seal, the district, on this day, twenty-first day of May, two thousand and twenty-four.
I'm a ghostwriter. I'm a ghostwriter.
Hey, you look very intelligent.
So that's it for all the accolades. We need a second. We have a first on the resolution. We need a second.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, Secretary Frizz.
We do need to.
You'll let me retire? You will let me retire?
Well, I don't know.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes, enthusiastically.
Trustee Wazor.
Two thumbs up, yes.
Treasurer Gaten.
Yes.
And President Dom.
Absolutely.
Volunteers too, like what's next, right? Never a dull moment. Laura Patrick, who used to work here, she's like, there's so much to do. I'm like, I don't want to be bored, right? I have enjoyed telling the story of the district over the years. I've enjoyed the diversity of everything I have learned, walking every single trail. This district was half the size that it was when I started, and so you can just imagine the growth. And it just kept things exciting here and just it comes back down to the people. I think I wrote an article once, bitten by the outdoor bug for the fiftieth anniversary. And I think all of us that that work here enjoyed the outdoors when we were young. And we just, that just like stuck with us, you know, just embedded and just became part of who we are. And which leads you to this, like, I can get a career in this. This is awesome. Talent, you know, marketing people tell them to get outside and, you know, enjoy the great outdoors. That was fun for me. And then eighteen-year wow, it kind of flew by. But if you think about all the things that we did as well, it's like, okay, you know, you dream it up, you can make that happen. I have all the faith in the world of you moving forward and doing great things. I'll be watching from afar, from a trail. I'll see you on the trail. We'll be out there, so we'll still stay in the area, but I just can't say enough. Thank you very much.
Okay, also going to have an introduction, some new team members.
Yes, so I'm going to have Larry Nichols, Building Maintenance Supervisor, introduce our newest member. Dan Estrada, Building Maintenance Supervisor, young.
Excellent.
How you doing? It's very excited. Those of you that don't know me, Larry Nichols, Building Maintenance Supervisor. Just want to take a moment to introduce Dan, newest member to our team. He's been on with us for four weeks now. Twenty years' experience building maintenance with him. He was with Aljun and Schaumberg YMCA for those years. So four weeks in, I've been throwing stuff at him and he hasn't skipped a beat. So he's picking right up and so far he's been a great pick for the team. So looking forward to having him on board. Well, we can start getting accomplished now that we're back fully set and have the, you know, the knowledge of something like him on board, so.
Excellent. Good. Welcome. Welcome. All right, next will be the IPRA Forest Preserve and Conservation Section, outstanding planning capital project. Elizabeth, you want to take over?
I'll start, and we do have an award there. And I'm going to actually turn it over to Amy Peters, who submitted the nomination to the IPRA Forest Preserve and Conservation Section. And this project was led by Sarah Rommel. So Amy, please.
Well, yes, I'm thrilled to stand up here and I think you know about this project, but it was a long time coming. It was a section of Curry Trail and one of our probably most populated sections. Originally, it was a very tight corridor, a little bit scary at times with water, a couple of inches away from the edge of the trail. So the district had always been working on trying to shore that up more short-term fixes. And so finally, we got the opportunity to work with an engineering firm. And we had the opportunity to partner with Lincoln Hills and a bumping down there to use a little bit of their property so that we could take care of the project or the problem once and for all. So I really was just the support team. So Sarah Rommel is our senior landscape architect and really took this project from start to finish. Hit some challenges, as we always do, some complexities, worked with all of the municipalities, with the private home, the owners that were back in there, the homeowners. It's part of, I mean, again, had a little bit of everything. We had the gravel pit to work with and to coordinate and as well as then shutting down a trail, which is never a nice thing to have the staff or public that we're going to do. But just did a phenomenal job. I can't say enough about how she handled every phase of it. And so this support goes to her leadership and her efforts.
Okay, the next award. Find Your Wild Summer Challenge.
Okay, well, we have this one, the state award, and one another award to the Department of Secret Conservation Section as those to our marketing team for the outstanding environmental educational program award. And so Wendy, if you want to talk about her, Caitlin, someone would like.
I am going to let Caitlin take all this. I know she put in the resolution, but this is her baby. Take it away. It's in the second year too, so we are very excited about second year.
Oh, yeah, so we, for the second year, it launches on Saturday, this Saturday. And we already have four hundred and fifty, over four hundred and fifty people pre-registered for it. So we had a thousand one hundred registered last year, so we're already almost halfway there with pre-registants, and it goes for three months. So we're expecting just really great results this year. But yeah, so we took home the state award at conference and then this, and it's just been amazing. We can't, I can't thank the rest of our staff enough for being willing to take photos with different site users while they're out on the trail for this kind of large scavenger hunt. So if you're not already, if you don't already know about Find Your Wilds, definitely take a look into it. Maybe you want to participate as well this summer. But yeah, thank you.
Okay. Hey, I think Chris was involved. I won. Okay, we'll add to the trustees' report. Meetings or anything?
Foundation, I think, yeah, my foundation, a couple days ago, I didn't say meetings all weekend, it was last Thursday. Anyway, they spent a lot of time on their strategic plan and a lot of discussion about our pending referendums and their support for it. They had a lot of really good questions, Elizabeth, giving presentation, maybe overall scope and kind of our plan and, you know, with the well, you've seen the slides, you saw her presentation. I should give those same presentations to members of the county board this week. But somewhat surprising to me in terms of the foundation members, despite the fact they're very supportive, is a lot of questions, very thoughtful. They had some really good suggestions in terms of actually changing some of the, not necessarily verbiage, but the way we might emphasize certain things, you know, highlights or thing. There was really good feedback, but, you know, I guess I expected more of a rah rah, you know, hey, let's go. And instead, it was more proceed cautiously and, you know, they gave it a lot of thought. So it was, I found it fascinating, their response. So Elizabeth, you were there with Sean, is that here?
She's helping.
Well, no, I think they're very pro in support. I think they wanted to make sure that they had the information and learned it, had it available so they can speak with confidence. And I think as we're finding through all the different groups, that seems to be, just to make sure it's understood. We're learning a long way this way.
I saw the clock been signed, but, you know, there's no question they're supportive. One of them, Jim Heisler, is an example. You know, he asked some really pointed questions and, you know, to the point of like, is he supportive of this? And he said, look, I want one hundred and twenty-five of the brochures. I want to get it, you know, to all of the realtors in the county. So they're supportive, but again, challenging a question, and that's pretty great.
Good. Anybody else? They're tied or anything?
That's tomorrow I'll be going.
Okay, that's ready, Tim.
Yes. No Farm Bureau meeting, but we, because everybody's in the field. But they did have, we did discuss the county's twenties, twenty, twenty-five?
Twenty fifty.
Twenty fifty plan and some of the language was quite.
When there was some tripping spaces, so I literally got. Right, I think it's your mechanic. Lloyd and myself and Andy and Elizabeth spent yesterday for us going over things with different county board members, getting their support for propositions. So that worked out very well. Anybody else with anyone? Well, one thing I did want to do a shout out to Valerie was at Malia, she got a doctorate, degree. That's very, so I'll give a shout out of that. All right, John, anything on your end?
I, our meeting is tonight, so nothing really big to update except that we working with the other board members to help with their support for the referendum to this. So, so what can do for that?
Surely.
Thank you.
All right, president's report. Public comments, number one, anybody out there? Sound like it.
I don't see any.
All right. Okay, we'll go ahead and have Pat go through the consent agenda.
Hey, I moved consent agenda and consent agenda. Twelve point one approval of minutes of previous meetings, twelve point one A, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, committee of the whole executive session. Twelve point one B, April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, committee of the whole. Twelve point one C, April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, regular meeting. Twelve point one D, April twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, special call meeting. Twelve point two A, acceptance of treasurer's report for March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, presented. Twelve point two B, variance reports, year-end fiscal year, two thousand and twenty-four, that's what that means. Twelve point three, ordinance twenty-four dash ten forty-five, facilitating second reading and adopting of a diddious, diddious people's land acknowledgement statement as presented. Twelve point four, resolution twenty-four dash twenty-eight, ratifying the conservation districts' application to U.S. Congresswoman Jan Sipolski, Ninth Congressional District for the fiscal year, two thousand and twenty-five, community project funding program to enhance public access to the Foxville Conservation Area. Twelve point five, resolution twenty-four dash twenty-nine, ratifying the conservation districts' application to U.S. Congressman Brad Schneider, Tenth Congressional District for the fiscal year, two thousand and twenty-five, community project funding program for the Silver Creek Habitat Restoration and Flood Mitigation. Twelve point six, authorization to prepare specifications and lift bids for the House Conservation Area, Lake Atwood Improvements, Cary, Illinois. Twelve point seven, authorizing repairs to listen, request for deposits for engineering services to design a wetland and stream mitigation bank at Kishawaki Corridor. Twelve point eight, resolution twenty-four dash thirty, authorizing the payment to the McHenry County Collector and McHenry County Treasurer for the twenty twenty-three first installment of property taxes in amount not to exceed ninety-four thousand five fifty-six point eighty-one. Twelve point nine, occurrence with the proposed amendments to the farm management policy, number zero seven point one two point one five, and to recommend second reading at the next regular scheduled meeting of the board trustees. Twelve point ten, resolution twenty-four dash thirty-one, authorizing the executive director to execute First Amendment to the month-to-month residence license agreement as presented to the term of April first, two thousand and twenty-four through March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Twelve point eleven, resolution twenty-four dash thirty-two, awarding a contract to she and I fence builders low response and responsible bidder for total cost not to exceed fifty-seven thousand seven hundred for the purpose of installation of livestock fence on approximately ninety acres of Pleasant Valley Conservation Area. Twelve point one two, resolution twenty-four dash thirty-three, authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Crystal Lake regarding improvements at near the intersection of Main Street and Common Shopping Center entrance. Twelve point one three, resolution twenty-four dash thirty-four, authorizing the executive director to execute the intergovernmental agreement with McHenry County, the McHenry County Sheriff's Office from May first, two thousand and twenty-four, through April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-eight, for police department dispatch for a cost of thirty-eight thousand one forty-one point three six to twenty-four and increasing by two and a half percent per year for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, and twenty twenty-seven. Twelve point one four, resolution twenty-four dash thirty-five, authorizing travel expenditures for the American Society of Landscape Architects, two thousand and twenty-four conference in Washington East, Washington, D.C., for senior landscape architect Sarah Rommel not to exceed four thousand dollars. Okay.
You know, one more. Twelve point one five, my cheat sheet didn't have that.
Oh, I forgot one in the back.
Twelve point one five, ordinance twenty-four dash ten forty-six, authorizing a line item budget transfer in the amount of ten thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars from general ledger account oh one dash oh four dash seven ninety, unanticipated expenditures to general ledger account oh one dash oh six dash six twenty-five, communication equipment maintenance to provide for the unanticipated higher cost of twenty-four seven EMS dispatch services with McHenry County Sheriff's Office.
Just supposed to move and in a second?
Second.
Okay, ready, second question on one of the resolutions before we go. Sure.
Yeah, just curious on the, on the the property tax, is that for farmland that's, that we do cash crops on or is that for the buildings?
It's for, it's for the farmland and the cash crop.
Okay, so the buildings are because of our tax exempt status?
Yeah, if the property is exempted. I believe when we looked, it's ninety percent of the property tax related to farm properties.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, move and seconded, second roll call vote, please.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Secretary Frizz.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Wazor.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Treasurer Gaten.
Yes.
President Dom.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Treasurer Gaten, all right, go ahead with the trustees.
Yep, so trustees have pulled a few items for audits. The first one would be A five three three five J C Light LLC, the amount of three dollars.
So I just mentioned, I did, I pulled that one because of the date, because it was backdated to March.
I haven't had a chance to pull up, but yeah.
I will get a smaller bit, there's a recent.
I know, I just didn't, I forgot to comment. So it's going to seem weird, it's three bucks, you're like, who cares? It was about the date. I just wanted to know why it was.
So that's good.
Second lineup was R five nine two two Red Bell Flow Nursery, the amount of five thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars. And the third one was P zero nine zero five Tel Septic, the amount of two thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars.
Okay.
Then consideration of a motion to approve the payment of bills as indicated on the submission of bills pending report for the month ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
They read and apply motion, in a second. The move is seconded, roll call, please.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trustee Wazor.
Yes.
Secretary Frizz.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Treasurer Gaten.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
President Dom.
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ray. Executive Director. Uh, Executive Director, Elizabeth, your report?
Yeah, just real briefly here, so we announced Find Your Wild starts May twenty-fifth this weekend, so you already heard about that, information's out, and did a great job. I did just put a few points here, again, just on the referendum proposition question, just I'm gonna go through very quickly, just since we're all here, in case we had anybody that was in attendance this evening that wanted to get more information on this, so as you know, we are advancing a limited rate proposition on November fifth during the general election. Its purposes are for water quality, preserving wildlife habitat, and improving outdoor recreation access for all. Three key purposes, with the water quality, the district will protect McHenry County's drinking water sources by safeguarding and restoring areas that filter and store our drinking water, they will also protect the water quality by protecting and restoring natural areas along our rivers, lakes, and streams. Wildlife Habitat Preservation, a conservation district will preserve and restore such a wildlife habitat, the plants and animals, including wetlands, woodlands, and furries, that protect wildlife species such as the sandhill crane, bald eagle, river otter, osprey, monarch butterfly, and botan. We've got a lot of comments, I've seen a lot of these new species that spring coming through, so it's, it's pretty spectacular, and the district will protect additional natural areas throughout the county. For outdoor recreation access for all, the district will improve trails, enhance parks and natural areas, and increase outdoor recreation opportunities for all residents and visitors, including people with disabilities, so that everyone can enjoy the physical and mental health benefits of being outdoors. So for a three hundred thousand dollar home, you would pay an additional two dollars and twenty-five cents per month, or an additional twenty-seven dollars per year to the Conservation District. However, because we have our property taxes going down in twenty twenty-six with our debt service being retired, with the passage of the proposition, instead of an increased, homeowners will see a forty-five percent reduction in their property taxes paid to the Conservation District. This passage will not, will provide new funding for the Conservation District to maintain and improve the quality of its programs and services, and homeowners will see a forty-five percent decrease in total property taxes paid to the district for a three hundred thousand dollar home, this means a ninety-four dollar reduction in their taxes paid in twenty twenty-six. The reason why we're able to do this is we've got the debt service being paid off, and as you know, so in twenty-four, twenty-five, and then we see that reduction down, so no increase, no amount, because the work of the district's gonna be there, so.
Nice new graphic.
Nice graphic.
Notice to our creative marketing team here, and you learn to make it all pretty, so this is great, trying to simplify here, but everything's going down, and that's what's going to be happening with the successful passage of the referendum.
Going downhill, Chris.
That was the hardest thing for both the board members and the foundation members to to grasp, was wait a minute, you're telling me it's going up here, now you're telling me it's going down, which is it, so?
Yeah.
That.
You wrestled with that, and that was nice that you came up with that.
Yeah.
Nice picture.
Good, they jumped on that, so we're simplifying, and I think that's the benefit, as we talk with individual groups, we're getting feedback, we're getting information, really important, and we'll continue to add to our frequently asked questions.
Less is more.
And less is more, right?
Yeah.
Um, the other thing tonight, we did send response over, you approved the City of Crystal Lake's IGA. Uh, we've been receiving some phone calls as well from residents about access of a new development, crossing the Prairie Trail just behind the Jewel Pool, so we did send on correspondence to the City of Crystal Lake. Um, we have confidence that they too are concerned with pedestrian and bicycle traffic, they have a lot of bicycle lanes on road, and and we work with their community, but just ensuring that um, they take some consideration, and will continuously develop their plans to make sure uh, necessary improvements are made to keep those areas safe for our, our users as well, so um, thank you Val for assisting with that, I know he intervened very regularly with the IGA, with the City of Crystal Lake, and their team when we receive things, to make sure we're on top of a lot of moving parts that happen throughout the county that we have to stay on top of. That's all I have.
Good. Um, back for updating, one thing I wanted to bring to attention, we did have our equipment sales auction, and Perry was handling that, and we had fifty-one items on it, and the auction went well, what was our total gross after the?
Uh, the auction went very well, all fifty-one items were sold.
That's the key thing.
That's the key thing, but I haven't taken any.
They're gone, yeah.
Um, anything from our used vehicles? Attachments, trailers, as well as like miscellaneous antlers, power tubes, I mean, a lot of these. So we brought in about sixty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars.
Excellent.
So it was a successful auction, and again, a big shout out to Ben O'Day. He's our auction coordinator, works with Jim Olgonoff, Olgonoff Auctions, I line auctions. He put that together with Jim, he coordinated the, the auction items, gathering all those, and then also being there with operations staff to have those items picked up on Friday and Saturday, so there's only a couple items left that need to be picked up, but it's, we're pretty much, we pretty much had that wrapped up, so it was a successful auction.
Excellent. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, another thing I just wanted to mention, I forgot to bring up, I got a phone call yesterday from Congresswoman Shikowski, and very excited about our three, what was it, three point six million dollar opportunity for, I guess it's a grant. And, you know, it's not done, but she is very optimistic about it, so it was good to get that call. All righty. Public comments number two, anybody out there? Nope. All right. We will now move into executive session, and there's nothing to go on after we reach the end, so thank you for coming.
So we need a motion to go.
Yeah, we need a motion.
We'll be going to executive session.
Okay.
And we need to read that, be certified.
Hold a second, and I'm sorry.
Linda and Lloyd.
We'll be going to executive session. Two C one personnel, two C two collective bargaining, two C five purchase slash base of real estate, yeah, two C twenty-one, walk session, open meeting, Zach. Live element, twenty slash one eighteen. Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Treasure Gately.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Wazorik.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay, man, I can add a motion to adjourn.
Oh, you gotta do a roll call.
Oh, roll call back, yeah. He still comes around in need.
Okay, so seven twenty-eight, President Dom.
Here.
Vice President Everard.
Here.
Treasure Gately.
Here.
Secretary Prince.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
President.
And Trustee Wazorik.
Yes.
Amy.
Okay, now I can add a motion to adjourn.
I don't think that enter, I'll entertain that one, no.
Enthusiastic.
I'll entertain, but you can second it if you wish.
I make that motion to adjourn and second it, how about that?
Well, you can, you can do both, you can do both.
Good move, I need a second.
Okay.
To adjourn, all those, but I don't know.
Treasure Gately.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trustee Wazorik.
Yes.
Secretary Prince.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
And President Dom.
Yes, we're adjourned. Oh, thank you.